Last, um, probably close to a year, the mayor and I have been having conversations about various items. And so we thought we'd just kind of encapsulate them all into one report and bring them back to the council for consideration to refer to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Their list of items is listed in the staff report, but for those who are watching at home. One of them, the first one is the Festival of Lights, should it be renamed the Festival of Stars? The community park, should it be renamed the Star Park? The third item is the dog feces in the community park, especially around the play structure. And actually, the police chief would like to make a short comment of that before we're done here.
Okay.
The fourth item is alcohol use in the parks, community park, tot lot, silver spot. Fifth item is already actually at the Parks and Rec Commission, and that is getting better signage, enlightened signage at Mission Blue. The teen center programming, which we've been talking about for the past year. And then to kind of reiterate to the Parks and Recreation Commission, the council's desire that they do an assessment of the cost effectiveness of various recreation programs in conjunction with your budget review, or timely for your budget review. And maybe Lisa-
I might just want to add to the number three, the dog feces in the community park, especially around the play structure, which is a complaint that I've heard, and I know other people have made as well. Add to that, that there are still some people who think that the community park is the dog park, and they can let their dogs run free even though there's a leash law. And when you tell them, hey, there's a law, you're supposed to be on leash, oh, I, my dog is nice, you don't have to worry about it.
Perfect lead in for what you would say.
Yeah. So, I mean, there's this issue, and then the question is, okay, if you can't keep dogs out of the playground area, and some people are irresponsible, and the feces get there, and the toddlers get into them, you know, should we talk about maybe putting some kind of a little fence around the playground or not? Would that be a solution that would help this problem? And we know that the playground is really successful. I mean, it's just mobbed, literally, except, you know, maybe now, maybe only the basketball court is going. But during the day, the playground is a really successful area of the city, and so we're very happy about that. But there is this conflict that's going on, and it's, you know, it's a health problem.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. This has been a problem, not only at the community park, but also other areas in town. Not as much as we've noticed in the leash law violations, but the dog owners not picking up after their dogs. Unfortunately, this type of violation is very hard to catch unless we observe and witness it, and then we can provide them a citation. So with that being said, what we did is we put together a very informative and educational flyer that has on one side the law regarding the leash, keeping your dogs on leash, and the other side being picking up after your dogs, and the violation there as well. And our plans is to have the officers when we're out on foot patrol is to pass these out to those in the community park, which would be a means to not only make contact with the people in our community, but also as a, bring this problem to, so that they're aware of the problem. So not only educating them, but also so they can keep an open eye on those violations as well, and give us a call when they observe it, so we can go out and address it. But I think many times it's just educating them, keep making people aware of what the problems are and what the concerns are, that people aren't picking up after their dogs, so that they become more aware of it. You know, there is a group of dog owners that do convene in the evening, and that's their way of socializing, and also bringing their small dogs together as a way of socializing as well. And we've recommended that maybe they think about going over to the dog park. But again, that's been an issue about the smaller dogs amongst the larger dogs. But they have been very responsible. They seem to be picking up after them and keeping their dogs on leash. So I don't, you know, those don't seem some of our concerns. I think what we're seeing is maybe it's the very late at night dog walkers that aren't being responsible, and since there's nobody else in the park, nobody to observe or witness the violation. So we will, this is one of our projects, that we'll be out doing some foot patrols and passing the out, these out, and communicating to the residents and to the public what the concerns are.
Okay, sounds good. I know another issue, you had mentioned, Terry, what there was a party at the tot lot once, where they were drinking a lot of alcohol and so forth. And that just seems to me that, you know, the tot lot is not a place for that sort of thing. And I hear from the city manager that officially it's against the law. So, but we don't have a sign to that effect. We have a big sign that says, no dogs in there, but in the tot lot I'm talking about, behind Silver Spot. But we don't have a sign that says, you know, consumption of alcoholic beverages is, you know, illegal. Is that a good idea or not, that's the question?
Yeah, I think that there is a prohibition from, what, a thousand feet from where liquor is sold, which would include the tot lot and the community park. And it's basically enforced, as I understand it, based on complaints, which actually we don't get very many of.
That's correct. Generally, we don't, most of our community's social events, such as the concerts in the park or other events, where people bring their individual, people bring their own alcohol, and they usually bring it in moderation and drink responsibly. We don't enforce the BMC that says you cannot consume alcohol within a thousand feet of any establishment that sells alcohol. So that would be Jewels, Twenty Three Club, the Brisbane Inn, Midtown Market, some of the restaurants that do sell alcohol as well. So the tot lot, that's a wide area that would cover all the way up to the tot lot and the community park. Generally, even with our rentals of their picnic areas, we've never encountered any problems. And when people rent the specific areas and have their little parties, again, they're bringing their alcohol to their event, and we've never encountered any issues. I think there's only been one time that I can recall personally where we got a complaint from one of the residents across from the park of people being loud. The officers responded, and there were some young adults that were drinking and had their beer, and it was, you know, after ten, eleven o'clock at night. So we were able to use the ordinance as a way, as a means of enforcing and saying, look, can't drink, you know, within this area, and we moved them on their way. But generally, we've never really encountered any real problems. But yes, the tot lot would fall within that means, and we could surely enforce, do extra passing checks, or if people do see this going on, they can surely call the police department, and we could address it.
Or we could have a sign in addition to that.
We can do that also.
You know, I mean, personally, I mean, you know, if there's a problem, then I think you address it. But, you know, if the Silver Spot families are having a little party, and they're drinking wine or beer, I don't see that being a problem. Now, if it's, you know, where there's beer cans that are left out, you know, then perhaps, yeah, then there's a problem. But I, I mean, I haven't personally gotten any feedback, you know, that there is an issue there.
Well, I guess it's probably the intent of who it is that's there drinking. If it's, if it's a younger crowd that don't have children, and it's just a place that they're squatting, so to speak, on the park, and partying, you know, and throwing their beer cans or bottles or whatever they're drinking, you know, around, and, you know, acting irresponsibly is one thing. The other thing is families that are getting together who are Silver Spot users and having a birthday party, which I happened to attend one, one time. And there was alcohol there, and it was real responsible use. So I guess, you know, it's, it's not as cut and dry, you know, but the law is using discretion, officer's discretion, and if you want to make it cut and dry, then it's going to be, we're not going to have any people at concerts at the park, and, you know, you're going to, you know. So I mean, we've got to be careful about what we do, I guess.
Yes. So I've got comments on item three and four. The party that I witnessed, and the reason I brought up and asked about alcohol use there, was there was a party that was during a Forty-Niner game, and I think this was, this was several months ago, if not a year ago. And the people had children, and they obviously enjoyed the game, and they had some alcohol, and they actually broke some bottles because they were a little tipsy carrying them back to the car and left the garbage all over flowing. And I commented to them and made them pick up the glass, because it was really inappropriate to leave the broken glass there. And that's when it came up where I asked about what was legal and not legal, because, you know, it's sort of hard to be the enforcer. I was, happened to be out walking my dogs.
And not in the tot lot.
And not in the tot lot. But again, you know, that was a one-off situation that seemed inappropriate to me. And if I'd had a cell phone with me, I might have called someone else. As it was, I followed up on it. Dogs in the park, I don't want to outlaw our dogs. And I know that a lot of, most people that are walking their dogs on leash are very responsible. I think that some of, and I know feces with small children is not good. Well, not for older children either. But I don't want to see us regulate dogs and good dog owners to a point where they don't feel welcome in the community. My dogs get to walk through the park every day with my husband, and he doesn't take them off-leash. I walk them up Quarry Road, and when appropriate, and when the other dogs are right, I do take mine off-leash. But I make sure that we pick up after them using those stupid plastic bags. Allegedly. So as a dog owner, I don't want to make, and I go to the concerts at the park, and I will bring a bottle of wine with me, and I think that in all these things, that we can be responsible, and we need to have a low limit on what we try to enforce. I think as long as it's controlled, and that we should be able to have a lot of mixed uses in all these things. I think in the sand structure, dogs are, I guess they still have sand there. Dogs are inappropriate. I think mostly you're going to have cats and other animals as the feces, and there's no cat proofing, so.
Yeah, that's right, no matter what kind of fence you put up.
No, there isn't.
We don't want to make it look like a prison either, you know.
And they could run in. I think there's only so much safety and protection we can give everyone without over-regulating. So I think there needs to be education and outreach to the community, but I would hate to see us over-regulate ourselves to a no fun allowed town.
Yeah, after, after, what's that sign? Fun in the park, or what's?
Oh, playful city.
Playful city. Then put a red circle.
No fun.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good point, Terry, I mean, what you say. But I think what it is, is probably in any situation, you know, when it comes to laws, and I think the chief could probably speak to that better than anybody, is always a few bad apples, you know, that cause us to react to. And some of them are just, you know, you're really going to have to do what you can, and it's probably identifying who they are. And I think probably the first step is what the chief is proposing is probably a good first step, is trying to educate. And I think most people will comply, you know. I think that, you know, most people want to do the right thing, and quite frankly, some people are just ignorant. But if you educate them, they'll respond in an appropriate way, but there will probably be those who never respond. And those are the ones you probably want to identify and force upon.
So the point of bringing this forward was that these were all comments made by various citizens at one point or another, including council members. And it just seemed like they're all kind of in the realm of the Parks and Recreation, and of course, some of them are in the realm of the police department, obviously. And I just thought we should bring them up and have them discussed, and maybe the Park and Rec wants to weigh in as well. And I'm personally pleased by the education program that the chief is proposing. Sounds like a really good idea. And I agree with my colleague here, that the problem is they're just a few irresponsible people, but they can get a lot of people pushed out of shape, and then sometimes you overreact. You have to sort of find a balance. The one thing that's a little strange to me, sorry, this one. The one thing that's a little strange to me is this one thousand foot law. That, I wonder where that comes from, and whether that really makes sense for us? I mean, it seems kind of an odd ordinance for our situation. And I'm just, I didn't even really quite realize that we had such a thing until it was in the staff report.
City Hall too.
And, well, Hal says it's been on the books before his time.
Yeah, I mean, it looks like something we copied from the county back in nineteen sixty-one, you know. Never changed.
Could very well be, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, it's interesting that I was talking about this with Commander Bob Meisner, and he thinks it came back from when the old, our old western days, when people would just walk around town and just, it would be drinking, people would openly be drinking and getting drunk, and so this ordinance kind of came into place to take some control of that. So that's a possibility.
Yeah, back in the day.
I don't know, I just, it strikes me as unusual for us to have such a, you know, one thousand feet. As you say, that's, that's a long way.
See, our cell powers are less than that. Six hundred feet.
Well, you know, some of these things you have on the list, Terry, I mean, the Park and Rec Commission is already, uh...
Right, some are already underway.
And I guess to that extent. So I can bring it back to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Parks and Recreation Commission already talked about number three, and they did put more signage there, so that way people would be better informed. I don't know if you want, and I think we would, it'd be better to have the police department go through their communication phase before it goes, before it goes back to the Parks and Recreation Commission. And then, I'm not quite sure, the direction for number four, which is the alcohol. Do you want that to go back to the Parks and Recreation Commission?
Well, there were just a couple of people who complained, and so I didn't even know about this one thousand foot prohibition.
I mean, and I was-
How to deal with that is an interesting question, because clearly some, again, some people will, you know, abuse the use of alcohol, and others in just a, you know, family kind of party, there's just normal kind of things. So again, it's a question of, of, you know, appropriate location, appropriate occasion, and what the law should be. It's, it's a little bit problematic to me when I just think about it off the top of the head that we have something that's so encompassing that we literally don't enforce most of the time. That just strikes me as a, as a problem potentially, you know. Because it doesn't seem to me that laws ought to be something you just enforce when you feel like it, you know.
Well, only they do it when they feel like it, they enforce it when it's necessary to enforce it.
But no, it's based on complaint.
So, I mean, I'm not quite sure that the Parks and Recreation Commission would be the proper-
But that is, there is a certain venue to deal with that, no, not at all, not at all. This is a new thing that, and I'm just thinking, is this really the kind of, you know, enforcement mechanism that the, that the police should have? Should it be different than that, or better than that, or more specific, or, you know, people who are engaged in such and such kind of behavior is blah, 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 I don't know. Just the one thousand foot kind of thing strikes me as so encompassing.
I mean, one, you know, I guess, way we could approach this is that, you know, at this point, we don't permit anybody to have alcohol in the parks.
I'm about to.
Well. There's an item that's coming forward to you, or maybe actually two items that are coming forward to you. And it may be that we want to look more at a permit system, but have some criteria for what is allowed for, or what is permitted to have alcohol use. Because I think, you know, like the concerts in the park are probably at appropriate use.
I don't know, I, I agree with Terry. I mean, I think what we have, what's going on right now is fine. And there's, like Clark has mentioned, there's, there will be some bad apples. And we have this law in place so that the police department can enforce that law if people get out of line.
Use discretion.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I mean, I think what we have is fine, and I don't think it needs to go back to it.
And that's, that's basically all our city venues, and parks, and fields, and, um, probably every place except the ballpark up at Mission Blue, up at the ridge, would be within the thousand feet of selling alcohol. So I think it gives, having it there gives them the most flexibility on enforcing bad behavior. While it does look like we never enforce it.
Anyway, I agree, it's not a Parks and Recreation Commission item, I certainly agree with that.
Okay, so I will bring items one, two, and as you know, five is already there, and six is already being discussed. So I can bring items one, two, and seven to them, and I think they are, I think as I reported previously, they're really looking more at fundraising than trying to, you know, than the other side of cutting. Because I think they would say everything that they're doing is serving a population. And I think the new budget that we're going to try and bring forward will highlight that more for council, as to what, how many people are in different programs. So I will have them concentrate on one and two at the moment, and finish up on the other issues as they go through them.
Okay. Sounds fine. Better move on. Thank you.
Yeah, we're ready. We're going to put up on the screen for people who are watching at home, the items, not all the background with regards to the work program. So what I'm presenting now is the two thousand thirteen work plan, which is, we built upon the work plan that we provided to you originally in January of two thousand and twelve. And at the end of the document, we have some additional items that we're recommending. As we go through this, certainly comments, observations, and also there may be other items that the council was just to add to the work program. I would say upfront that this is not in any priority order. This is just a listing of areas and projects that we're working on. It's not an effort to prioritize. So the first item is the recology expansion and remodel. In two thousand and thirteen, the draft EIR for the project through the Baylands draft EIR will be coming out, we anticipate in May of this year. And then we will be working with the applicant in terms of the timing and steps of processing. And this will continue throughout the calendar year of two thousand and thirteen. The second item is the Baylands EIR specific plan. That is projected to be issued on May of two thousand and thirteen. We anticipate a hundred and twenty day review period, that's already been set by council, and then response to comments, so that probably takes us pretty much to the end of the calendar year. Staff and the council subcommittee will be working on development of a community-wide opinion survey, and we're working with a consultant right now on that. And that would presumably take place sometime in early two thousand and fourteen. The third item is the Sierra Point Design Guidelines. Last year, the council established a subcommittee of council members Lentz and O'Connell, and they've been meeting and working with staff, and we've just provided them some additional information as of today for continued discussion and deliberations with regard to that. They'll come back to the council at the time that the subcommittee determines that there's something to bring back. There we go. So just so that we know that it's possible for items to come off of the list. The community park playground equipment project is completed, done, fini, and so it will drop off the list for, after this. Item number five is the underwinding of the redevelopment agency and start up the successor agency. We've met all the timelines for the dissolution of, dissolution of the RDA, the due diligence review for the former housing fund, the due diligence review for the redevelopment agency itself. In this particular year, we'll be looking at refinancing the Brisbane public financing debt, and evaluation for options for refinancing the former RDA debt. Brisbane Financing Authority debt refinancing was considered at the February fourth agenda. Refinancing the RDA debt is an issue that will be evaluated over the next several months as there's some effort being made to do community, well, actually, we did look at the idea of doing a countywide bond refinancing, but we've kind of put that onto the shelf at the moment. Now, discussion will continue on a countywide basis, but we're going to move forward on our own, because there's money to be saved there. Six, affordable housing projects, the Lau property, as we've had a kind of an exhaustive discussion of that earlier tonight. That is pretty much on hold because of the changes in the state law and the funding. But it is, I think, good to note that we still have properties that we are able to do projects with as funding becomes available into the future. Okay. The seventh item is the high-speed rail. There is a notice of preparation that has been prepared with regards to the electrification project, and the staff is evaluating, or will be commenting on that. And we will bring back the draft EIR later in the year with comments, and before we send that off, so the council can weigh in on that. Item number eight is the EPA Anrel Renewable Energy Grant. For this year, that report will be included in the draft environmental report for the Baylands, and any project would be subject to the Baylands planning decisions, which would probably be a couple of years into the future. Water and sewer rates-
Officially, it hasn't been published yet.
And officially, it has not yet been published, although we have, we have high hopes. It will be done soon. Number nine is the water and sewer rates. This is always a fan favorite. We'll be bringing this back to the council. We've been meeting with council subcommittee, and we've been looking at some options for financing some capital improvements, as well as just the rate increase for the operation, operating expenses. That will be coming back to the subcommittee first, and then back to the council this spring. Next item is airport noise. We have been, Cliff and myself, met with Congresswoman Spear and the FAA a week ago Friday. And I think that the outtake of that was that we have seen progress with regards to, at least the data suggests that there's progress with regards to the nighttime flights and the overnight flights. But essentially, the FAA has told us that there is really nothing that they can do with regards to the early morning flights, the six to eight P.M. flights, and that's basically a traffic volume issue with what's coming out of San Francisco and Oakland at that time in the morning. That wasn't a terribly satisfactory answer to us. And I think Congresswoman Spear tried to, you know, get them to evaluate options, but to be frank about it, it didn't seem like that they felt like that there was anything that they could do. So that's kind of where we stand right now. It is on the work program for the airport roundtable, and I'm sure Cliff and I are going to be talking with the chair of the roundtable, and Jeff G., and seeing what-
Has the chair changed, or it's still the same guy?
They voted to have Jeff, uh, continue as the chair. You know, one of the things, let me just kind of cut in here. One of the things that we did talk about was, and in Jeff G.'s letter, having the height of the planes before they make their turn, moving that up to sixteen hundred feet. And so we looked at, well, it's, just like, as Clay has mentioned, during, after six o'clock, there's a lot of volume in the, in the sky, and if you're, you know, and safety is the number one issue. So the FAA, you know, after we had our meeting, I talked with them, and with Burt, and they're going to look at perhaps having the Oakland flight also be at a higher elevation, so that you continue to have that separation, and they need to have a thousand feet. If you have a thousand feet, then you're good. So if our planes are higher, and their planes are higher, then there should be the safety level in place where you could, you could make that happen. We'll see, but you're right, I mean, it, you know, they weren't real enthusiastic about trying to find options and alternatives for that busy time, but that is something that they're going to study, and hopefully we'll get it at the- And hopefully, we'll get it, uh, at the next, uh, airport roundtable meeting.
Okay, the next item is, um, I've kind of lumped together, although they're somewhat separate issues. Uh, the library Eagles and Teen Center. Um, the Eagles being the Eagles property, uh, the library being a potential, um, new library, and, uh, the Teen Center being the Teen, the, the current location of the Teen Center as well as the programming. So we have, um, we met with the county, or, uh, with the school district staff, um, and Parks and Recreation staff of the city back in, um, I believe December, January time period. And we started, um, shifting some programming up to, um, BES in the after-school hours, um, working with the, um, school, um, principal up there. And so far, I believe that's going fairly well. Uh, we'll get some reports back on that. But that was something that they were very enthusiastic about, doing that. Um, staff is continuing to work with the Eagles and the architect we hired. Um, and I think we'll probably be in a position to bring something back for the council to take a look at, um, hopefully in the next, um, month or two. And then we can kind of go from there and see what, um, what, if we want to move forward with that. If not, or how we want to, uh, approach that going into the future. Um, the history project, um, update, I think we're pretty close to, uh, we've got all the information now. Um, it's been written and drafted, and so we're just waiting for the final draft, I think, on this. And, um, then we'll be ready to bring that back to council for, um, one final review.
Basically, it's history.
It basically, it's, it's, hopefully, it will be history by next year. Um, and we'll get, uh, then we'll have the discussion about how we want to, um, get it printed and then get it, uh, released out to the public later this year. Um, Sustainability Committee, item number thirteen. Um, this is a project that, um, has made, um, some significant progress in the last year. Um, we are now at the point where the Sustainability Committee has, um, is close to having a revised document, um, dealing with, um, the, uh, I think there's ten program areas in there. And then the next steps will be for, um, us to work with our consultant, Jeff Cypher's, on development of performance indicators and, um, and also, um, a work plan in terms of, um, ultimate, um, implementation of the sustainability goals. This, again, relates, um, at this point entirely to the, uh, the Baylands and would be used in part, uh, for, um, everything from conditions of approval out there to, um, development agreements to the development of the specific plan. It will kind of help guide us, be our kind of north star in terms of, uh, uh, our negotiations and our deliberations. Uh, the next item is the fire station, which I think came up earlier this evening. Um, we have, um, I think, you know, things are going relatively well with regards to the way we've got it set up right now and, uh, and where the firefighters are, are living. Um, but obviously, long-term, we want to do some sort of fix for that, uh, station if, if indeed we're going to keep it there, which I suspect we will. So, um, we will be meeting back with the Facilities Committee. It's, uh, we have a number of issues that we're talking to you about. Um, and this will be coming up in, uh, one of our meetings in the next month or so. Uh, we'll look at various options, and I hope to be able to have that kind of put together in a package to bring back for your discussion and consideration during the budget session. Um, form-based codes. This is a project that, um, is kind of on the books, but has been, um, really delayed due to, uh, everything else that's going on in the Planning Department and, um, with regards to the draft environmental review document and some of the other projects that we've been working on. Um, there are elements of this that will be dealt with. Um, later on, when we talk about the Economic Development Program and potentially bringing back a, um, charrette exercise for the industrial park that the Economic Development Subcommittee has been deliberating on and, and working on. Um, and also, we're looking at, uh, initiating a Southwest Base Shore residential sub-district rezoning as staff time and budget permit. Um, the next item is Economic Development. Um, we, the subcommittee has been meeting on a very regular basis over the last, um, year. Um, and we are, uh, we have worked on a draft of a plan, uh, to bring back for the council to consider. Um, and I think the decision of the subcommittee was to try as best as we can to work within the resources that we currently have. In other words, we had had some discussions in the past about adding staff. I think we've kind of said that that's probably not something that's going to happen at this point in time, so we're going to try to work within the resources that we have. So that's kind of, um, I think, um, guided a lot of our kind of discussions as a, as a subcommittee. Um, a couple of the things we're working on, as I said, to bring forward a, um, a plan, uh, for the council to consider. The other is the Crocker Park Charrette. Um, and there are a couple of other items that, um, we're working on. One is, uh, having to do with a, a, an event promoter that, um, we could potentially have a, uh, a contractual relationship with. Um, and I'm drawing a blank, but there's a lot, I mean, we've been meeting on one.
Running Waters.
Uh, what's that?
Running Waters.
Running Waters, right. And then we also been, uh, hotel developer out at, uh, um, potentially do a feasibility study for our hotel site out at Sierra Point.
Also fiber.
And the fiber in the industrial park is another project we've been looking at. So all those will come back to the council as well as kind of an overarching plan to help guide us in our, um, you know, future discussions and deliberations. Green building ordinance, um, draft ordinance to be reviewed by Open Space Ecology Committee and Planning Commission and subsequently scheduled for City Council consideration this upcoming year. Budget and fiscal planning, the subcommittee has been meeting, um, or has met with regards to that. Um, Stuart has come up with a hybrid, um, monolith, um, budget that is, uh, only of his making, um, that he has, uh, presented to the subcommittee that I think meets some of the needs and some of the concerns that we've talked about in the last few years. And, uh, so that will be, um, developed further. And, uh, I don't know, Stuart, if you want to take this opportunity and just talk about that a little bit.
Um, what we're trying to do is create both a department, division budget like we've had in the past for those departments and divisions, um, which it makes sense for, and then create a program budget for those departments like Parks and Recreation that it makes the most sense for. I think the decisions that council makes for Parks and Recreation are very much on a program-by-program basis. But for other departments like police, it's not so much the program, but having the department. So I'm trying to combine those two ideas into one budget. It's not a normal way that other cities budget. So it may take, as I've told the subcommittee, I will be presenting something. It may not be exactly what the council is looking for, and I'll present something else again. I mean, I'm just trying to get the best information that the council, um, needs to make the decisions they want to make as opposed to trying to stay true to form for what would be industry norm.
Um, in addition to that, we'll, um, as you know, we've had, uh, some staffing changes with regards to the oversight of the Marina. Um, so I've had the, um, new director, as well as the acting harbor master, um, look at the plans that were presented to you last fall. Um, and, uh, they'll be coming forward with some recommendations for implementation of that and how we go about doing that. That will be coming forward to you in the next, um, well, I, I'm hoping in April that we'll have that on one of your agendas. Um, and then also, at the same time, we'll be also looking at the whole funding issue and, um, what we do with the Marina Fund versus the Parks and Rec Fund versus the General Fund and, and what the impacts of all that is. Are, excuse me. Um, Bayland soils processing permit update. Um, this is, um, again, one of those items that's kind of been delayed because of other things that have been going on. Um, but it will be brought forward to the Planning Com- Commission first and is intended to be for the commission sometime this summer. On Geneva Avenue Candlestick Project Committee Report. Um, staff expects the PSR to be fully ready for Caltrans signature in the spring of 2013. Uh, and staff will continue to work, continue to monitor the recently unveiled idea by the San Francisco's Mayor's Office to reroute the Bus Rapid Transit line off of Geneva Avenue to relocate the Bayshore Caltrain Station to a more northerly section, or north, more northerly location. Um, that has a lot of potential implications for a variety of different projects, and it's kind of something that's come up, um, just recently from, um, from some, some people in San Francisco. Not, uh, not everybody, so.
Okay, I'm going to excuse myself in a moment, please.
So, hm, where do they want to put the, the bus instead of on Geneva?
Um, well, I think they actually had it going down, um, the Bus Rapid Transit actually going down Blankin.
Yeah.
Yeah. That was, that was our reaction. Um.
Dumb idea. Just say it. It really is a dumb idea. It's like, it doesn't even make sense down a narrow street. There's no way in the world you can widen.
Yeah. I, I guess the one thing I would say is, is that, you know, that this is serious people in their transportation operation that are suggesting that, that that be the, where the bus is going and the train station be moved, um, more northerly. Now, we, we have, I think, argued, and they seem to have understood that the need to, to not really push that at this point because we have an EIR that's based on the train station being where it is right now. And that could completely undermine our EIR. Um, and this thing is just really in the embryonic thought stage. It's, there's no plans, there's no, you know, engineering, there's no anything to really back it up at this point.
Yeah.
But it's, it's out there.
Yeah, one, one of the things that they, they, they talked about was the, the Third Street Rail. And so they want to bring Third Street Rail to the multimodal station. But they don't want to bring it down to Geneva and bring it across. Costs too much money, so they want to, you know, they want to move the train station, the multimodal station further north so that they, cost them less money to connect, uh, light speed, light speed, um, light speed rail. Yeah. So, you know, lights, no, not light speed, uh, light rail.
Caltrain.
Yeah, no, the Third Street Rail, so, uh.
So how would a bus get, uh, over, across the freeway?
Well, if, uh, if you go down Blankin, it, it actually goes underneath the freeway out the Candlestick. Very narrow.
Yeah. But it doesn't, it doesn't fit with recology's expansion either, so it just is, yeah, it doesn't make sense. But that's San Francisco, so.
No, it, it is goofy.
Um, so the next item is, uh, number twenty-one is the grading ordinance revision. This is something that we've been working on, um, with Mountain Watch for a few years now, and it's currently before the Planning Commission. Um, once the, uh, Planning Commission acts on it, which we, I think they've had already two meetings, so hopefully sometime soon, and then, uh, they'll come forward to the City Council. Um, item twenty-two is, I think, pretty much been taken care of with regards to the, um, both our non-binding water supply agreement as well as the, um, refinancing of the bonds. Um, so this is just an area that we'll continue to monitor and bring forward any items that, um, might happen during the next year.
Which, which bonds?
Um, that was.
Right, that was the ones where the Bosco, where SFPUC refunded some of, or Bosco paid off SFPUC early for something. Where there was a savings that came to council that has been finished.
Uh, twenty-three, the Affordable Housing Program, we talked about this earlier today, um, earlier tonight. So, um, I think probably, uh, now that we have some funds in here, it might be good to spend some time developing some options for the council to consider in terms of programming. Um, and also, um, I think we want to maybe try to take some stab at, you know, what kind of revenues we might, think we might get in the next five to ten years. Uh, because that's really kind of the planning horizon for, for these types of projects. Item twenty-four, um, was the High School Subcommittee, which may be a little bit of a misnomer at this point. Um, but it nonetheless was the Subcommittee that kind of worked on, uh, various school issues over the past year. Uh, things seem a little bit quiet at the moment. Um, I'm sure not, uh, completely, um, not, not gone away completely. Um, but the, um, the Subcommittee, or the Two by Two Committee has worked on various analysis as well as, uh, having various meetings.
So it really is, it's just school committee, really?
It should probably be just.
It should.
Because it's both high school and elementary, right?
Yeah. Yeah, it, it had a different origins when it started, but I think school committee should probably be good.
Yeah, something I guess we'll talk about, uh, a little bit later on.
So the items that staff is suggesting that we add, um, to the, uh, list for next year is the development of a long-term strategy for post-employment benefits, OPEB. Um, we talked earlier tonight, collective bargaining strategy. Um, the 2014-22 housing element. Um, general plan update, which, um, we will now be in a better position to move forward once the DEIR is, um, is issued. And then the twen-, uh, the city attorney recruitment. And one item that I didn't have on the list that I'd like to add is the, um, um, monitoring, or, uh, monitoring's not the right word, but the, uh, we, we have our, um, waste franchise coming up in the next year, uh, for, um, either renewal or for, um, bidding. Um, and we're also looking at issues there in terms of creating a couple of different zones. So I'd like to put that on the list.
Um, I'm hoping that the committee that's going to be convened to look at all the land issues, uh, that might not be at the level of the council, but maybe the Subcommittee can certainly meet before the, it seemed to me before the draft EIR comes out is, is a better timing rather than after.
Oh, yeah. Yes, yes.
Okay.
With that, that's the, uh, end of my report. Um, any input or comments are welcome. And we'll get, uh, Terry had suggested some changes with regards to the city attorney recruitment. Um, then we'll get that into the wording in there.
See, um, we're eleven minutes past where we went, so.
So the question is, do we, I have one other quick comment on the, uh, work plan, but the question is, do we want to try to finish the rest of the agenda? Uh, there's really only one item that has a time factor. The rest we could postpone if that's your privilege or pleasure, or?
Well, you want to put a time limit, Terry, you're probably going to have to get up to earliest tomorrow. I don't have to be up till seven AM.
So what's, what's your pleasure? You want to postpone these things except for the one that has a time factor, which is the grand jury thing? Or do you want to push through, or what do you want to do?
Well, I'll make a motion to extend the meeting to eleven thirty, and then we'll see what we can get done. Start with the items that need to get done, work our way through it.
Didn't you have another item that needed to be with the Zippy?
We postponed that to the next council meeting.
Oh, okay.
I think, um, I think we should, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, it's going to be the next one.
I think we should, um, if the mayor, answer your question is to.
Yeah.
Get that done.
Get what done?
The, the item regarding, uh. Can't find it now.
Which, which, in, in general, what are you, what are you looking for?
Uh, the item you just mentioned, uh, about the grand jury.
Yeah.
And then the other one would be the, uh, uh, council Subcommittee list.
Want to do, try to do that?
Yeah.
Okay, and then postpone the rest?
Yeah.
Okay. That's a motion. It's been seconded.
Okay, I'll say yes.
Okay, all three of you please say aye.
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 Okay. We'll go for it. A quick comment on, uh, work plan. I mean, it's, it's great to have all this stuff laid out there. It's kind of overwhelming. Um, and, but I did want to note that we've been, uh, working on an, an Excel presentation form for the work plan. But I did want to note that we've been working on an Excel presentation form for the work plan. And that needs some more work. And I think one of the things we need to sort of build into it is some kind of timeframes for all these things. So we can kind of see what's coming up in particular months and so forth, so we can get an idea of, you know, when things are projected to hit the council, so we can even it out over the rest of the year. So that's just another way of presenting all this stuff in a way that might give us a sense of how we allocate it over time.
Okay.
Okay. Let's do the grand jury thing, 'cause that's quick. We have this letter from Judge Novak, who wants possible nominees for the grand jury, and she wants to hear by March eighth, which is Friday, I guess. And so the question is, does anyone have any suggested nominees? Or would they like to bring them to the attention maybe of the city clerk? And we could send a letter, if you have any people in mind, or if anybody in the audience, if there is anybody left, has some suggestions, bring it to the attention of the city clerk, and we can bring that to the attention of the judge who's in charge of the grand jury.
The only person left in the audience, that's Scott Hart from PG&E.
Are we on the grand jury? Anybody have any thoughts on that, or just leave it the way I left it?
I think, leave it the way you left it.
Maybe that's something we can just kind of put in our...
Think about it?
Yeah.
Is that something that the position would be, we would want to agree as a council on nominating someone? Or is that up to the individuals? I, I know we all got this letter, and is, or is that up to an individual to put forward a name? I mean, it...
I think it would be just individual.
Okay.
But maybe it's something we wanna advertise, too, 'cause maybe somebody is interested and don't know. We can put it on our website.
Yeah, they've got, like, a couple days to think about it.
Right, or Friday.
And Cheryl, if you, if you do serve, I mean, do you, are you paid? Is it a paid position? Okay, I'm gonna just, uh, okay, all right.
You get various reimbursements and stuff, I think, but it's very minimal.
Yeah, it's like jury duty.
Yeah, right.
You don't get picked for jury duty. Get exempted from that.
Okay. So the other item that our motion included, and we have fifteen minutes to do it, is to look at our commission, subcommittee, et cetera, appointments. And we have a lot of vacancies. We filled some of them that Seppi vacated that were high priority, but we still have a bunch of others. So we all have this list in front of us, I guess, right? And so how about just going down and stopping at each place where we don't have anybody, where we probably should?
Well, I have one, one, uh...
You wanna add something?
...suggestion to combine number ten and twenty-three now, since twenty-three kind of, that's what the High School Subcommittee is kind of...
Right. So ten, twenty-three is basically the school subcommittee, right? Agree with that, Cliff?
Yeah, absolutely.
So we just basically eliminate twenty-three and the, kind of, the High School.
Yeah, make it just a school committee, and it's already got its membership complete, so.
Okay.
Is that okay, Cliff?
Oh, yeah, that's probably works.
All right, okay.
Oh, you need an alternate for number five.
Okay, so let's just go down, yeah. So now we need a CCAG alternate, and, um...
You can't be me.
You can't be Clark, 'cause he's our delegate, our representative. And since I've been there, I kind of do not like to do that anymore. I've been there, done that, and so I'd like to ask whether either Terry or Cliff would be interested in being Clark's assistant.
This is, this is a daytime...
No.
No, it's a nighttime.
It's a nighttime?
Thursday night, once a month. And I don't think they meet all during the summer.
The only, the only, well, yeah, I don't think we meet in July, but, uh...
And when you say night, what do you mean by night?
It's six thirty PM to eight thirty. What is it, Scott? Six thirty, right? Yeah, yeah, it's six, it's six thirty PM, and it's at the Samtrans County District.
And, and what, what, Thursday?
It's usually the first Thursday of the month. Sometimes the second. Like last month, it was on Valentine's. So we had heart cookies.
Right, you only have to go with Clark.
No, I'm just, I know, I'm just trying to think, because I, I'm just trying to see what other commitments I have. And Thursdays is the night that the Airport Land Use Committee meets, but that's the...
Airport Land Use Committee is actually tied in with CCAG. That's a, that's a subsidiary.
So they probably...
Subcommittee.
So they just go from one to the next?
So they won't ever, yeah, they won't ever...
They're not gonna meet at the same time.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's why I was asking.
'Cause it's same staff.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, the County Library JPA, Terry needs a alternate. And I would volunteer for that if nobody else wants to do it.
The daylight meeting.
It's okay, it's all right with me. It's only when you can't go.
Yeah.
Okay, this, the next one, nine, it's not noted here.
Yeah.
It's Seppi, it obviously, that's, probably not gonna be true, they warn us, it's a liaison with the Chamber and Business Relations. And I was thinking there probably should be somebody from the Economic Development Committee?
I don't know, do we even need to have that?
Or do we need to have, or...
No, it's, it's good to do, I'll do it, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
It's usually like seven AM in the morning.
That's the Arts Committee, actually, now, back to eighteen, I guess?
Yeah.
Has that committee actually ever met?
We do. We meet, um, basically once a year to, uh, to discuss the Mayor's Art Achievement Award.
Okay.
Get feedback.
Which is a nice thing.
It is a nice thing.
Yeah. Okay.
But it's a one-time, once-a-year deal.
Okay. You wanna do that, Terry?
Sure.
We can make it any...
Here I'm sounding so enthusiastic about putting more meetings on my schedule. Just so the public knows, there's thirty-seven committees on this piece of paper, and there's four of us to split that work.
Yeah. Okay, so the next committee, the Public Information Technology Committee.
Well, actually, I'm on that, my name's not on there.
So you're on it.
Yeah.
But it's a two-person committee, so don't be overly enthusiastic.
Okay, so we got one, we're not looking for two.
No, there's two, it's a two-person committee. It's a two-person committee.
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
Can, Clark, can, can we fold that into economic development?
Well, it's different, isn't it? It's really the newsletter and, uh...
Or is it anything else?
Press site and...
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that, okay, yeah.
Sounds like we gotta volunteer, Cliff.
Okay.
What?
Spoke first.
You just folded it together, okay.
Now, twenty-one, I, I thought this was you, Hart, your own Hart, right?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you know, I go to this thing.
Yeah, but, yeah, right, so you're there anyway, right?
Yeah, I went to the, I've, actually, I've gone to all, all of these meetings. Seppi didn't go to any of them, so...
So since, uh, you're, you're actually appointed there...
Yeah, yeah, it makes sense for me to go, because the meeting is, then, the regular Hart meeting is right after this one.
Okay.
So why don't we just leave it vacant, leave it on there?
Well, just put it...
Leave it on there in case, you know, Cliff, you know...
Just put it as Cliff, and, you know, for the time being.
Yeah.
Right. And, okay, the schools business, we, straight... Oh, I wanted to ask, um, BB CAG, um, why don't we have two council members there? What's the history to that?
Recent, um, I think, for, for whatever reason, Terry wanted to serve on it, right? And, uh, and they said, yeah, okay, so you both can.
Okay, so is that what you wanna do?
I'm okay with it, I'm, you know...
You're okay with it?
Yeah.
I enjoy the meetings, I find them very informative.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
All right, if you wanna do it, that's fine. Just, I was just trying to think, maybe we could, you know, economize a little, but if you both wanna do it. Okay. All right, Bosco.
That's one I, I would like to do, that's...
'Cause you were trying to get that...
You wanted it last night.
I recall.
Well, you know, it's kind of funny, 'cause it's Water and Sewer Subcommittee, it's, somebody should serve on it, but it's also, uh, I think the meeting takes place generally after, um, one of the other meetings that I'm currently on. Let me see which one it is. It's down, takes place down in Samatail County. Randy and I talked about the logistics of it. Uh, which one is it? I don't, I don't think it's on here. The, um...
Okay, we're still on Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency?
Clark wanted that, Clark, yeah, we're good.
Yeah, yeah, I, well, there was another, what I'm saying, there's another committee, oh, it's Samatail County Emergency Service Council. So the Bosco meeting takes place after that.
Okay.
Is...
So who's the person that's on that thing?
According to Randy, and that, uh, one's in Samatail County, um, at, um, county offices. And then after that would go to, like, Samcarls or somewhere like that.
Is that the ALS?
Hmm? It's not the ALS, it's right on the first page, number four, Samatail County Emergency Services Council.
You're already on it.
Right.
Huh?
Yeah, that's what he said, these two meetings, uh...
Yeah.
Right, they go before, right?
Meet adjacent to each other?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, and that was my point, it just took a long time to get there.
Exactly, Clark.
It's getting rummy now.
Okay, so, uh... Clark is our Bosco rep. Um, then we got, um, the liaisons to the Planning Commission and the Park and Rec. Uh, I thought you were on the liaison to the Park and Rec, how come it's...
You just didn't get on that.
Yeah. So you're by yourself now on those two, what it amounts to?
Yes.
So, anybody wanna fill in in either one of those? Terry, you have a, I guess it's got a sort of between Terry and me, I guess, you have a choice?
Well... I guess I would say that I'm more inclined to the Planning Commission, because I'm already on the Planning Commission. The other one that's not on here.
Your number thirty-six?
With, with Clark.
That's thirty-six?
Yes. I'm already on that with Clark.
Okay.
So I guess that's sort of...
So you wanna go with the Cliff on the Planning Commission liaison?
I think that would be...
Okay.
Better than...
So then, that's for me to go with Cliff on Rec, if, unless you want it, Clark, yep.
No, I'm, I'm on twenty out of thirty-six.
I figure you're on, all right. Okay, so I'll go with you on, on the Rec? Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, it gives Cliff an opportunity to see his wife.
Yeah. Doesn't see her that often.
In the public meeting.
Yeah.
I'll look that dinner, honey.
Okay, so is that, that handles it, right? We got it?
Somebody will give me my new schedule.
Hey, look at that, we got three minutes left.
Yeah, okay. So we, we did all that, okay?
Could I just give a quick update on, on CCAG, and especially since Scott Hart is here?
Oh, okay. Got two minutes.
Okay. Well, PG&E presented a ceremonial check for rebates to customers who participated in the Samatail County Energy Watch Program article. And Scott, that was what, one point six million dollars, or something like that? And that was, uh, rebates that PG&E actually gave back on, um... You wanna come up, just give it a twenty second?
Uh, it was rebates that they received as part of the Energy Watch Program, uh, with home efficiencies, you know? So if they put in a new washing machine, new HVAC, uh, water heaters, insulation, those kind of things. And so they got rebates. And so we aggregated those in to give an idea of how much had been saved, and how much had been given in the form of rebates, with about one point, almost one point six million dollars.
So do we have any idea how much efficiency was achieved?
Uh, that in itself is, uh, still being worked out, and I apologize for not being prepared to, uh, present that tonight. I was here more as a spectator.
Yeah, no, no, Clark...
I will be glad to follow up.
Yeah.
Be glad to, I'll send an email follow-up with the specific amount of, uh, energy savings.
Yeah, and it, and it was like, it was like, covered like twenty-five hundred, three thousand people, or something like that, customers, the amount of people. So they probably give that number, too, I, you know...
I'll send a full report on that.
Okay, no, appreciate that.
And...
Sounds like a good program.
Thanks, Scott. And the other, the other thing I just wanted to update you on was that you did approve a contract with KEMA Services for two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. And this is your Climate Action Planning Services, the one that Brisbane is not a part of, 'cause we chose not to take the money for it. So they'll be coming and talking to Brisbane, and I'd love for them to meet with the Sustainability Subcommittee, 'cause I think, uh, maybe give them feedback on what they're proposing. And remember, we thought there were some real deficiencies, or maybe, uh, over a rainbow, that they were shooting way too high, that they're not even practical, you know, if you recall.
KEMA, K-E-M-A?
K-E-M-A.
Isn't that the same firm that UPC uses? That's what I thought, yeah. Right. But we know that, it's a Dutch firm, I think, actually. But they have a branch in East Bay.
Yeah.
Okay, um... We need to mention that there's Oral Communications at number two, for anyone who would like to speak. And, uh, I guess the last remaining member of the audience has spoken. And with that, I guess we can adjourn?
Okay.
Okay, all the way, say aye.
Aye.